I'd like to take this opportunity to call this meeting to order. Please ask you to rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which has stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for being here today and to ask everyone to make sure their phones are silenced, please. We'll get started with minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
motion made and seconded that we approve the minutes as presented of the previous meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Kelly?
Yep.
We'll get you out here pretty quick.
Great. I'm just here for a couple of more 144s. The last time I came for the two, the other two that I had interviewed, they just, after I got back from that meeting, they called and said, "Sorry, we missed your call." So it was just a matter of time that I couldn't put all four of them over here that day. So the two that I, the two additional ones is a Ken Largin. He's a retired fire and EMS personnel from Greensburg, so he has radio knowledge of traffic and whatnot. And a Brittany Brown, she came to us, she's local, but she came to us from Franklin County National Bank. She just wanted to come down part-time. She has a little knowledge, she's part of Everton Fire Department, in the radio, so we're, and currently we're in the training mode, starting it up.
And because those are part-time?
Yes, yep. Everybody's part-time.
Cool.
We're just kind of getting...
Is there a motion for...
I'll move to approve the 144 for Ken Largin and Brittany Brown for 911.
Second.
motion made and seconded that we approved the 144 request for 911. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Linda, I understand that you have a meeting that you'd like to get to, and was wondering if you could speak sooner. We'll hold our patron concerns to fifteen-minute conversation, so...
Oh, I won't take that long.
Okay, all right. We'll let you go ahead and speak then. Thank you.
Jane, I'm going to give these to you to pass. Well, I'm here representing Ordinary Folks, Fayette County, Indiana, and the cards I'm passing around, it's our marketing piece, and basically gives you an idea of the vision and mission, and then on the other side, basically who we are and the member benefits because it is a member association. One of the things that we're focusing on is programs outside of the major focus, which is going to be working on neighborhood development, developing a couple of model neighborhoods with the hope that other neighborhoods will then develop from that, and we'll start working on that piece next month. But one of the reasons we came into existence is to give ordinary citizens of the county an opportunity to have their voices heard, because over the years, what we have heard is that they feel that their voices are not heard. In other words, there's no opportunity for them to have input, and a lot of people will not attend a public meeting. So we're doing something, starting in March, the end of March, called Bright Ideas Community Conversations. We're doing several different versions of that. One is a larger group event, one in the end of this month, and one the 90th of March. But we're doing something sort of over the coffee cups. We will start out once a month. We will ask a different elected or appointed official, or perhaps more than one, to join us at a local restaurant during the lunchtime and then later in the afternoon. We'll alternate that and invite the public, anyone that wants to come in, meet you, they may not have ever met you, find out what you do. For instance, I don't have real clarity on the difference between the commissioners and the council, so I think there are probably other people who have that as well. Not only can they meet you and hear what you do and why it's important and how it all fits together, if they have concerns, they can express those. And I'll give you a quick example. I posted, it was posted about the recycling and the fact that two of the trucks are not road-ready, and people got all upset about that. Chad got on and explained why, and people understood. So if they have an opportunity to know why something is being done, it helps them feel better about it and feel better about all of us. So we want to do that and give people an opportunity also to express their bright ideas. The Ordinary Folks group is an 11-person steering committee, and all Ordinary Folks, you would not probably recognize most of their names, but they have some amazingly bright ideas. So you would have a chance to do that. What I'm doing today is simply sharing this information with the commissioners and with the council. You will receive an email from us inviting you to participate in general. Once we put the schedule together, which will be between the 13th of February and the end of March, then we will ask you if you are willing to sign up for one of the lunches or the evening presentations. And we're saying about 60 to 90 minutes. It may not last that long. I have a feeling it will start very slowly, and there may not be anyone come. But I think after people get used to it, they will come. So that's the information I wanted to share. You will get an email. This way you'll know what it's about, and you can let us know if you're willing to participate, and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Becky?
Okay.
You're next up.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have two different things. The first one, I'm here representing the farmer's market. It's going to be that time again, guys.
It is, isn't it?
I can't believe it. So we set our dates...
It's not going to come too soon.
We're going to have a lot of snow, and we can get things in the ground earlier this year. So the market date is set for Saturday, May 2nd. We changed the time to 9:01. We've had some people say they want to sleep in a little bit before they come down. And then we added last year a Thursday market, and that went really well. So we're going to start it again in May on May 7th, Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00. And we're hoping to run possibly maybe to the 1st of October. We'll work with other, of course, other events and different things. Some of our farm producers really have a lot of fall product that they would like to get out, so we'll just see how the season goes, and we'll keep you updated. And of course, you know, again, we always like to collaborate and work with anybody else. So we're at, we're just asking permission to use the same location that we have. This will be our fifth year, so it's kind of hard to believe. So we've had over 50 vendors this year. We even reached out to Richmond. We got a lot of vendors from Richmond at the Thursday night market. So we're, we have Rush County, Henry County, Franklin, and Union County that's coming.
I've got a question on that. Can we get a space for our animal warden to be down there with dogs?
Yes, we, and I know a few years ago, we tried, you know, we tried that. We would love that. And I think they did come on Saturday, and we, all the animals were adopted that day. So we also, this last year, we had a pet day. Riley Lopper, she's one of my forge kids and one of the Lilly Scholarship winners, and she did, she worked for the animal shelter, and they came down on a Saturday. And again, those were all adopted. We would love it. No, that would be great.
I'll have Dave get ahold of you.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not every week, but make it special occasions.
And Megan Phillips is our farmer's market coordinator, so they would get a grant to help pay for her, hopefully through the rest of the year. So that helps alleviate some, because it takes many hands to do this.
So plans are still out here?
Yes, the same place, yes. And I know there's some that the county owns there, too, so we were just asking for permission.
I'll move to, once again, allow the farmer's market to use all county-owned property outside here for the farmer's, the 2020 farmer's market.
The city always gives permission for the people to use our property, so why can't we give the city?
Well, we've got the mayor.
Do I got to go to city, too, and ask permission? Do you just one stop?
Two, four weeks, Gary. Come on.
Can I do this in one stop? Guys?
Okay.
So I'll just, I'll just make my motion pertaining to county-owned property.
Thanks, Dale.
Motion made and seconded that we allow the farmer's market to operate in the same county property location that they did in previous, or last year. Is there any other questions? Does this work with the city's plan?
You're on my next agenda.
The only thing I'm making sure is I have that, you say Thursday nights?
Yes.
We just have to make sure we have that in our calendar so that when we have meetings, have people know that we're parking here.
Right.
First, by the parking area.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't had a, and we'll work with everyone. I mean, we always have, and trying to make accommodations, and so we have lots of space.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. And then my other thing is, I, this is good news. I don't know, I know you gentlemen know, I work for the nutrition education program with Purdue, so I'm here on a USDA grant, which is free. So I've been here almost 10 years, and so this has been totally free, and I appreciate the office space in the extension office. So we just received word that we've hired two, more employees in the program IM, with IM, it's NEP assistance, and what they're going to do is they're going to go out and do free education nutrition classes and physical activity classes in schools, low-income areas. And the two people, one is Kelly Isaacs, and she will be in Fayette with adults, and Union County with children and adults. And the other one is Carrie Pfeifer, and she will be in Fayette County, working with children, and Franklin County with adults and children. So they have never done this, they've never given us two NEP assistants in rural area. So I just want to let you guys know what a gift this is. I'm really excited, because it's been very lonely doing some of this work. I can't do the education part. I can be out here doing the policy and system environmental changes, so they're going to be out doing all these free educational classes to the communities.
Correct.
So I just wanted to let you guys know that what Purdue is putting into that. And also, I don't know if any of you guys got these?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is a big deal. We are actually featured in the Purdue Annual Report about the oasis. This is going to go national, so I'm really excited about the collaboration with so many organizations here in town. So I just want to give you guys kudos and thank you for supporting Purdue Extension. So I don't know if you have any questions about the new employees or...
You're doing a good job, Becky. Just keep it up.
Well, thank you. Also, I don't know if you knew this, we had 20 landscape architect students from Purdue that came here this fall. We had the designs downtown, downstairs, sorry. Please come down and see them. They did renditions of the courthouse area, Second Street Park, and downtown. Those were worth tens of thousands of dollars. And so the professor is willing to get architect firms to sign off on them, so I would love for you to really just come down, look, and see some ideas, just kind of think it outside the box for our community.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Before we move on, we have a inter-local agreement, dollar amounts change with the IT department with the city of Connersville and us. The Board of Works, Chad got signatures yesterday, approval and signatures. Jane, the change is at 1,500, or is that what it was?
Yes.
It's to be split.
Yeah. The 3,000, yeah. So it is...
3,000 dollar raise.
The, just, just has the raise figured into it, and it'll need our approval.
You saw it, didn't you?
Yeah.
Is it okay with you?
Yep.
I'll move to approve the 2020 inter-local agreement between the city and county on IT services.
I'll second the motion. Motion made and seconded that we approved the inter-local agreement with the city of Connersville with the IT department. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Get that signed, and then Mayor, do you have anything that you want to talk about today? Okay. I want to make sure, because you wanted a copy of it, didn't you?
I just take that one bit.
And that way you could, anytime you need to skip out, you can grab a copy and go on. I wanted to get that out of the way. Jane, do you have anything for us today?
I was just going to tell you what we've got going on right now. With the weather being the way it was, but you notice I said "was." We were ditching in Berman and trying to check all the cans we need for the roads we put in for the community crossings and all that, and we're trying to check whatever we're going to do for cans, make sure we don't have anything we need to do on them, too. So we're, we're doing pretty busy. We got our, I told Dale, Mark, you wasn't in there when I told them about it, we got our lift in, and we got it set up, and they were working it through some motions, because the guy said he'd be back down this weekend to do some more hydraulics on it and all that, and a top pulled out of one of the cylinders on it. We pulled, pulled, pulled the cylinders out today. We're going to send them back, he's going to send them back to Texas, so see what happens. But you could see it wasn't welded in there very good, so they need to check both up. Because it's a good thing, they were running, they didn't have no vehicle on them when they were standing.
Yeah.
It's been a bad thing. But we'll, we're getting everything ready for tonight, make sure we don't get caught or unaware about what's going to happen tonight. If we get any snow or anything, we'll be ready for that, and we'll probably go back out and do some more ditching if it don't do anything tomorrow.
Okay. Great.
Nothing, Dale?
Sounds good to me, Jane. Thank you. Thank you, guys, having us, too, here.
Michael, do you have anything today?
Just...
That's a dumb question for me, wasn't it?
You what?
That was a dumb question, wasn't it? Do you have anything?
My election with the Ted Cut Off with the Windows 10, Windows 7 thing, so one thing that I've run into this month with the remote PC, last year, we've been running into the, with the 200 computers, we have, it's $7.49 and 50 cents for 200 computers, and I've been bumping right up against that. The next level for our license is $999.50 for 300 computers, and we really have about 240 computers that I need to cover. So I'd like to go up to that level, and I have the money for that, so I'd like to go ahead and get approval to go ahead and do that. And it is a useful program. I use it all the time, and it means I don't have to try to drive all over town, and I can work on multiple computers all the way across town. There was one day last week where I was working on computers all the way from community corrections to fire station three all at the same time. I had 10 computers open on my computer all at the same time, working all, all the way across town, without having to drive all the way across town. So it saved a lot of time without having to run around looking for Ted Cut Off, so...
Is there a motion? To approve that?
Yeah, I'll move to go ahead and allow him to bump it up. Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded that to allow Michael to bump it up to the next license fee. Any questions?
No need for me to ask him any questions on this.
You don't know the question to ask?
Yeah. He's, he's as far ahead of me on technology, I don't stand a chance.
And I just got him set up on it so he could remote in to work on Laos, so...
No contest.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
And I think it actually will be prorated because the, our license actually, I think, resets in November or July or October, so I think that's why our license was, so we have already had a couple months, so, okay, I will get it taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I saw you walk in.
Yeah.
You've got some business for us, don't you?
Sorry, I was out of Fayette Central again. Got stuck in behind the line of parents, so they were gracious enough to let me out. Take my hat off. Sorry, I forgot to have my hat on. But I just wanted, I don't have any final numbers yet. I had reached out to you guys individually and discussed the possibility of us purchasing another vehicle from Reedman Motors, which would be a 2020 Dodge Durango. Obviously, with what's left in our account, there's not enough to purchase that. We would be trading in a vehicle, several vehicles, actually. One of them is a Durango, or a, sorry, Dodge Ram that has about 110,000 miles on it. Still runs fairly decent, but we would be moving some vehicles around and trying to get rid of, Commissioner Naylor and myself had spoke about trying to get rid of a few of the vehicles that are kind of an ice-axe over in the Dollar General parking lot. So one of those is a Durango that we don't use very regularly, and also another Malibu. I believe it's a 2009 Gold Malibu that is being used. A lot of the vehicles that you see back there are used on transports. We do a lot of after-hours transports, so just really looking for permission to continue to negotiate with Reedmans on those trade-ins and try to get a final number that works that we can purchase this other vehicle.
Okay, you're, you're talking about, you know, I don't know what all has been talked on this. When you first started this discussion, I had a phone outage for two days.
Oh, no. Okay.
That's the reason...
The world had closed off then, when...
Yeah. But you build, that won't happen. So I figured with that kind of delay, there was no reason for me to try to interfere in the way you was doing it. So you're, you're, the only way you can buy another vehicle this year is to trade more than one vehicle in?
Yeah, but the other vehicles that'll be traded in don't have much value. They're, a Durango, we have a trade-in quote of about $13.75, which is actually more than I expected for Reedman, so, yeah. So, and the Malibu, we still have to take over, or the Impala, I keep saying Malibu, the Impala, we have to take over. But the truck, we gave us a good price on the truck to, to trade in. It's Dan Becker's truck, he'll actually be getting the new one that you guys had already approved. So, you know, some of those we've sent to auction, and they've just not got much value. The trade-in helps us to continue to keep the vehicles moving and rotating the way they should be, so that's, to me, the best use of that money, but obviously it's your guys' decision, so...
Okay, so you want, you want to just, you want our blessing, just go ahead and try to negotiate a deal?
Yeah, if that's okay. I, I, I went ahead and did a, we still, like I said, we still have to see what we can get for that Malibu. Yeah, the Malibu, the Impala.
Impala.
Mix them up, I don't know why. My dad sold cars, Chevy cars, and stuff. 20 years, I can get them mixed up. But, yeah, the Impala, let's see what we can get for that, and I think that'll get us to our final number, where the Durango's not going to be nothing. I will not be asking for any additional money, that's bottom line.
Okay. Then we get rid of two vehicles that are just sitting on the parking lot.
Yeah.
Plus one that's in service.
Exactly, yes.
The Ram is being utilized.
Right, correct.
Well, it ain't going to hurt nothing to try to see what kind of deal we can make, I guess.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Let's just keep working at it.
Okay, thank you. One last thing, just to kind of update you guys and the community. Last week, we had a meeting, I believe all 92 sheriffs were there. If not all, just about everybody was there. We had a meeting with Governor Holcomb last week and discussed the per diem that we received for DOC. He was very receptive. As you guys know, that fee increased from $35 to $37. The original proposal from the Sheriff's Association was $55, and we also discussed the possibility of the state looking at opening, reopening or opening up new mental health facilities that would take off this huge burden that is throughout the state. And it was a good meeting. We took a picture, I was back in the corner, you can't see me there, not that anybody wanted to see me anyway, but I was there, and it was a good meeting. He was real receptive to what the sheriffs had to say. They've been pretty proactive with trying to get him on board with some of these things that hopefully, I don't know, it'll happen this year, or, you know, when it will happen, that will help us decrease the jail population at some point. So it was, it was a good meeting, and just, I don't know if anybody was privy to that, I think it's on their Facebook page, the Sheriff's Association Facebook page, but very good meeting, and it was cool to meet the governor, so he was on the same page with us. We'll see what happens from here on.
We'll accept selfies on that.
Yeah, selfies, yeah. I tried, there was a big line to get to, and so, all right, thanks, guys.
Joey, I appreciate you putting the time into that, working with per diems and, and whatnot, because that is, I mean, I think we thought we were going to get a big, big boost in that last year and during the budget year, and it kind of, what I thought, slapped us in the face.
It kind of, last second, switched it, and kind of led us to believe one thing and switched it, so...
Yeah, so hopefully this next, next session, the budget year session next year, we can have a stronger response.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Have a good day.
You, too. Bill, do you have anything?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to sit?
No, no.
I was going to say, we'll let you sit if you want.
Oh, that's okay. I need to walk. Yeah, I've got a contractor lined up on the drive foret in Ott Creek, and down on a road, not on creek, but he just wants to make sure we can close the, close the road and don't have to wait until school's out. In fact, I talked to a guy the other day that actually lives on the road, and was asking him if school buses go across the drive foret, and he said, "No, they actually turn around in his driveway." He lives about a mile and a half north of it, so the school buses don't go across it. So I just wanted to get your permission, because they talk like when the weather breaks, they jump on it. Yeah, $16,278, put all that on, and...
$16,000?
$278, pen it and everything. The only thing we have to do, well, what Jay has to do, is clean off the old gravel and knock off the debris off the ground, but, you know, they, that's...
And that'll put a four-inch cap or six-inch?
Eight.
Eight-inch cap?
Mm-hmm. That's eight-inch.
You'd have to match the...
Yes.
The half is not missing.
Yes. Yeah, so...
Okay.
And I'm not sure how long it'll take them. They'll have to close it, you know, they didn't really say.
Could I ask you to get ahold of the transportation to...
I could make double check and make sure.
Double check.
The guy that called, he goes by over it every day, and he was wondering what was going on, and I told him, and I asked him if you ever seen a school bus go, and he said, "No, in fact, they turn onto my driveway." So I'll, I'll double check and make sure. Yeah, I'll call, I'll call down.
Is that, now we really, we didn't advertise that for bid, did we?
No, couldn't find nobody wanting to do it.
$16,000, we don't have to, I don't think. All we have to do is get quotes up to $25,000.
Is that the only, only person you can find interested in doing this?
I mean, it's up to you, huh? You guys.
Well, I'm not going to pick at it, because I don't want to bid.
I want to.
Yeah.
The gentleman that called, he said, when he drives his car, he, that, hits bottom and everything.
I think he did.
Drives his truck, it's okay, so he said it's...
Safety issues, we can go ahead and do it.
Did you, you happen to recall what his estimate was on the number of yards of concrete?
Actually, 600 square feet. I'm not sure what that would be in yards.
600 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
I could, I could figure out how many you... I could, I could figure out how many yards that would be at eight inches deep.
Mm-hmm. Now, that's only, needs to be, give me feet, doesn't it?
Yeah, a whole lot, really.
The, one yard.
Six square.
One yard of concrete will equal eighty square feet, four inches thick.
Fifteen yards.
So I'm.
Fifteen yards.
Fifteen yards. I know Chad knows how to.
How many square feet you say?
Six hundred.
That's about fifteen yards, eight is.
Fifteen.
About a truck and a half.
One more truck, we can get fifteen yards of truck.
No, eleven, ten, eleven yard. What is it, a hundred and?
Honestly, that part I don't remember, but the torture of figuring concrete in my life, I just gotta start with it.
Well, it's at least a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty dollar yard, I think.
It's been some long, some long, long.
But that's probably, is that four thousand max, or?
I'm not sure, it didn't.
Bridger cap, I said bridger, you said drive forward cap?
Yeah, cap over the drive forward, half of it got war stall.
Rebar?
Yeah.
Rebar and fiber, or just rebar?
Um, actually, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna pin it, because it wasn't pinned when it was put on, twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago, that's about war stall.
And finish three quarter.
Three quarter, or rebar. Install number, number five rebar at four feet on center, both ways, drilled down, epoxy. Do, yeah.
I haven't heard any better offers today, have you?
Nope.
I'll move to approve the contract. I don't even know who you're dealing with.
It's Minders Concrete out of Myland.
Minders Concrete.
Minders, M-E-I-N-D-E-R-S Concrete Construction out of Myland, Indiana.
At Myland, Indiana, to repair the drive forward on Ott Road for a sum of sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
I'll second the motion.
So motion made and seconded that we approve the contract for, as recited, for sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Now, as far as road closure, is, is anybody gonna be shut out if we, when we close that? It's not, I mean.
Everybody go north and even go south, south of Rankin County, I don't think.
So, do we want to give, go ahead and give Bill's permission to close it during construction?
Well, sure.
Yeah.
How, how many days do you recommend?
I'm not sure how long it would take, I don't know how long it would take for it to set up and traffic to go over it.
Concrete used to, with the weather, they cover the blankets, and there are a lot of traffic here. About one a week, I think.
Yeah, one, two weeks.
Whatever it takes.
Yeah, it'll need a little time to cure before we put traffic on it.
It'll take a long journey, holes and that, too.
Do you want to?
Maybe two weeks, maybe. We can go with the contractor's recommendation on that, I'm sure.
But I think, I think we probably need to make an official motion to allow the road closing during construction.
All right then, I'll move that we allow the road to be closed during the repair period and for whatever period of time that it takes for the concrete to cure safely enough to allow traffic to go through it.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded that we allow the road to be closed during the repair procedure and remain closed until it safely cures for traffic crossing. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Ready, so I got.
Thank you. Jay?
When they get ready to do it, I'll put letters in everybody's mailbox down there, let them know how long that we can shut down.
Okay, all right, great. Bill, any word on the two small structures?
Oh, one, I'm not sure, I'm gonna have to give Eric a call and see what he can get him scheduled.
Okay. All right. Any, anything else for Bill? He's kind of been off, off for a while, so. Glad to see you here today.
Oh, thank you.
Did you start back this week?
No, actually, last Monday, I was here last Monday.
Last Monday, good. All right. See, I don't see anybody else here, Dan, till we get down to Dan. So, Dan, do you have something for us today?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you recall the last commissioner meeting, we had a, had a good discussion regarding the feasibility study for broadband in Fayette County, and we, the indications were that we could get participation to help defray some of the costs. We would go forward with that, and we have found that. The, as you recall, it's with Paul's Broadband. They were the best and best price of the three bids that we, we had. It's a twenty thousand dollar study. And we, we, thanks to my board, we will pay half. So I'm coming before the commissioners today, asking for your help and paying the other half.
Dan, will we be able to get this done in time for that writing of that grant?
Uh, it opened five days ago, and it closes in April. They're looking at a sixty-day window. I can ask them to, of course, I don't want to, I want them to do their best job in the shortest period of time that they can.
I mean, this, this is a revolving grant, it, it comes yearly, doesn't it?
There'll be another round, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
As, unless our technology changes dramatically, like we start telecommunication between our brains, it's gonna take something like that. The government's gonna continue to invest money into this form of communication. Yes, so it'll, it'll continue on. There'll be other opportunities if, should this feasibility study run long and we miss the window, there will be more opportunities. And this one does need, this USDA does need a feasibility.
I'll, I'll move to provide half with the broadband study, because it will benefit the county.
It will benefit us greatly. Schools, it'll help the schools, it'll, it'll help everything.
And I'll, I'll second that motion. And I will comment, too, that there's, through the USDA, there's a, in Indiana, if I understand it right, Dan, a hundred million dollars up for grabs. Is that correct?
There's, there's more than that. There, there was a hundred on the overside. This, and I don't know what the limitations and how far the area goes, but there's one USDA at six hundred, and there's another one at four or five hundred, so there's a, there's over a billion dollars worth of money out there.
Coming to Indiana.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure it's Indiana, I don't know what the state coverage is on that money.
One county.
I don't want to misfigure here and make you think that it's just all Indiana.
But there's a lot of money.
There's, and, and there will continue to be more money, unless we.
I think.
Change some of the communication case.
If I understood it right, rural development, USDA, however you want to title it, sees this as the, the yesterday's electrification, rural electrification. They see this as the federal government's gonna have to step in and help broadband internet expansion into the rural areas for it to be feasible for private entities to.
Yes.
To operate it.
At forty thousand dollars a mile.
Yeah.
It's, it goes beyond most municipalities, it, it just, it's, it's a huge number to put your arms around. And there are ways to fund it, but we don't know how much we need to fund, because we don't know what we don't know, and that's what this feasibility study will do. It will tell us, what's the best process and the best methodology for Fayette County going forward out in the rural areas?
Motion made and seconded that we do fund the remainder of this feasibility study at, at ten thousand dollars. Are there any other questions? Statements? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. I will, I'll, PDG will then engage them. We'll put the letter on wire tonight and tell them to.
Proceed.
Get going.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for your legwork. You've put a lot of work into it the last ten months, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see county representative, county council representative. Jeff's not with us today either. Chad, you sure you don't have any? Just here staring, huh? All right. We'll move on to mail. I showed you gentlemen that frontier letter. Jay's working on that for us, as far as verifying whether we was digging down there or not. And then, I don't, do you have any other mail that needed to be presented? Does anybody?
I don't.
Okay. We'll move on to old business. We have a board appointment to refinalize, or?
Yeah, reappoint.
That, that is a, hers was out this year?
Yes, we, we have.
Or last year, the December thirty-first?
December thirty-first, yes.
And she wishes to be, remain on the board?
Yes, she wants to.
I'll move to reappoint Amanda Stevens to the cemetery board.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded that we reappoint Amanda Stevens, which would be a four-year term? Correct? A four-year term, beginning with January first, to the cemetery board. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Gary Warley looks forward on the subject of cemetery board. I had some communications with the president of the cemetery commission just today, as a matter of fact. And they're worried about the mowing contract, and whether or not we'll get, get that put together and advertised on time to be good for the first of April. There's been a little bit of discussion, I know, about the terms of the contract agreement, and they would like for one of us to come and go over that with them before it's finalized. And as far as I know, we really haven't officially changed any of the terms of the agreement or the contract as it'll be advertised, have we?
They have.
They've made some suggestions, but we haven't.
We haven't approved or disapproved.
We haven't done anything yet. Well, they're requesting a better line of communication on this, I think that was too far. I don't mind sitting down with them, but I wouldn't, didn't want to butt in line if either you or Mark wanted to do it. They, they want to have a, a discussion about it before we go too far. It's the cemetery board.
Yeah.
Makes no difference to me. I don't have to be there. I've, I've given, I, I've given my opinion to one of the board members. He called the other day and asked me, and he said, well, I'll take those thoughts back to the board, so.
Yeah. Well, before we advertise a contract, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
I mean, I think some of the things that they've put in that contract's gonna escalate the cost of the contract considerably. I think they're trying to be too stringent.
Well, to require grass to be cut and maintain it two inches high is too much to ask.
It is, it's way too much.
But there's, we really haven't had a, had a serious discussion with them.
Something like this, you don't have any control, we're just gonna go the room.
Yeah.
How many we have available to pay for?
So anyhow, they are amenable to having a, an unscheduled meeting of their board to talk to either of the three of us if, if any of us are willing to do it.
I'll, I'll talk to them.
It'll pass that long. But if we, if we go and get that bid, I mean, you know, April first is gonna be here before you know it.
Yeah. I would hope that they're ready to advertise by the first of March.
I.
Or for our first meeting. Have it, have it advertised and have bids in by our first meeting in March.
Sooner the better, because that'd give you more time to record and get things if it don't work out.
Yeah.
Okay. So you can pass those thoughts on with your conversation. All right, anything else on the cemetery?
Not me.
Anything else on, any other old business?
What happened?
Move on to new business, any new business that came before us today?
No, it's on the, I think it's on our property, the form. Whatever has to be done at ABC, I was just gonna do that to Mark.
Here, Mark, you've been dealing with USDA on the farm, kind of form, you want to?
Okay.
Check on that.
I guess I did have a piece of mail.
Yeah, you did, didn't you? All right. Seeing new, new business, we'll move back into patriot concerns. Mr. Worley is here today. A reminder, we'd like to keep it at a fifteen-minute discussion, sir.
Commissioner, this is Downard. Thank you for allowing me this time. I'm not here on behalf of the airport. For a change, I'm here on behalf of me and a lot of other veterans out there. I served eight years, ninety-six months, four of it actually, four of it on reserve, as a lot of other people did. I'm no different than any other vet. However, my name is not on that board. It's been sixty-three years since I turned in my DD two fourteen, and my name is not out there. The shadows are getting long, and I'm, I'm concerned. I have a grandson who is a Navy pilot, I have other grandkids. My father's name is out there, my brother's name is out there, my first cousin, a dear friend, Jackie Worley, who was shot to death in Bloody Ridge in Korea, is out there, and I'm not. And there's many other veterans, I, I, I talked about this several years ago, that find the same situation. Matter of fact, I saw one guy, his name was penciled in, kind of sideways out there. I'm asking for guidance. In twenty sixteen, I went to the veteran service officer and asked what to do, how to do this. He recommended me to the commissioners. At that time, I spoke with Frank Jackson. The commissioners at that time, I think that was twenty fifteen or sixteen, had allocated a contract to a graphics firm to update that wall. And I went to that graphics firm to make sure my name was there, and it was. They were going to upgrade the wall with the names of those who, of us who had been admitted but had turned in our DD two fourteens. Well, I then had a couple of years of bouts with pneumonia and bladder infections and so forth, and I just kind of let it slide, something that you don't do every day. Well, when I got back to worrying about it again, the veteran service officer was gone, Frank had served his term and resigned. The graphics company, graphics company that was doing it had closed. So I'm back to square one. I need to know what the commissioners have involved in this, if anything. Would there be an objection if we, those of us who would like our name out there, who deserve our name to be out there, if we. deserve our name to be out there, if we pooled some resources, paid for it ourselves? Would that be possible? But we're being left out, a whole lot of us, and that's all we ask. We don't ask for money or anything else. We ask for a simple fact. I want my name out there, so when I'm out here and deal, somebody will come in and look, oh, I know him. I want to be remembered. I served my country. I still am. I'm still under oath. The oath doesn't go away, does it, Mark? So that'll stay with us until we're gone. But that's what I'm asking, is guidance. That's all.
Gene, how were you missed to begin with?
I have no idea. I have my DD-214 in my pocket, and I had copies made of it. That was the same question that other folks have asked. What happened? I don't know. I really don't know. That was, say, 53, 57, 43. That's 63, almost 64 years ago I got out. So everybody or anything that had anything to do with anything back there is away. They're gone.
Well, isn't it true the Veterans Council always kind of handled that?
I really don't know. I didn't get much out of the Veterans Council. Like I said, the veteran service officer referred me to the commissioners.
Yeah.
And that's when I, Frank and I are good friends. Frank's a nice guy. And Frank informed me at that time that there was a movement about to make that right, to upgrade that. And at that time, he was right because that graphics company told me, yeah, that we're upgrading that.
Yeah, that project was started, but it was never finished.
Never finished. It never.
Some of those placards sat in here for a year or more while they worked on them. Now, I know that some names were changed, some, I know some were added, but I don't know how many of the individual frames actually got attended to. Obviously, the one you would be on.
Yeah, the ones down toward the end, I don't think were ever touched.
Yeah.
When I took over as commissioner, Frank told me that they were working on trying to get funding, private donations, to redo them, and that he would like to continue, he'd like to take that bone and continue working with it. I said, I don't have a problem with it, and I think Leota told him the same thing. And the last I knew, Frank still had all that information that they were working on there. So I don't know if you want to communicate with Frank and see where he's at, where he, and it's probably one of those things that, you know, if something's not poking you in the side, you don't move.
Yeah, it is. It's not a great big movement. There's not 2,000 of us out there down here beating on the walls every day.
Right.
It's just individuals. It's me, and maybe some of the guys I talked to in the past are already passed. I mean, they're already gone.
Yeah.
Because we're guys in my age bracket, career more, dying off about 1,500, 2,000 a day across this country. And this is like the World War II vets are almost all gone now. And it was just seven years between the end of that war and my enlistment. So we're getting into that age group, but we're fading away. And then it's going to be the Vietnam guys.
But he.
As far as I know, he had all that information that they were, they had started working on, and he took it with him, so.
Did we have a fund now, Jane, that they can donate to?
There was a fund set up, yes.
Okay. Can you give him the information for the donations, and then maybe we can get with Frank on that, see what we can get done?
At the time, hold on, no, we set that up.
Gene, I'd be glad to contact Frank and see what the status of that was at the time he left.
Well, I see Frank occasionally. I'll do that.
I know that was a project that he took on on his own.
Well, I, like I said, the graphics, I went over to make sure. I said, here's me, here's me. And I said, yeah, we've got you. And we're going to upgrade this. They even showed me the style of print everybody used. It matched the style out here, and I thought, boy, that's great. But it never happened. It's like a lot of things, they put it on the back burner, and other things were happening.
I think Frank had the goal of redoing.
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
The trouble is, your last name starts with a W.
Sorry?
Your last name starts with a W.
Yeah.
That's a trouble.
You know what? That's why I do it. That was way on KP, and there was lots of W. I mean, I ended up in pots and pans and.
But I think Frank was taking a real heart to it, personal heart to it, and then, like I said, it's.
He was certainly spearheading it.
Well, then you suggested I should contact Frank and see, and then he could communicate with you gentlemen perhaps? Or you want me to come back and what?
You can come back anytime, Gene.
Oh, well, I. I mean, on this issue, you don't want too many people down here reporting on the same thing. And if Frank is doing this, perhaps.
We'll check with Frank and see what's going on.
I'll have to see if he's still interested in it. That would be one thing.
And we need to know really how far he got.
Yeah.
I don't really have any idea how far down the alphabet he got.
I was heartbroken when I found out the graphics company that was doing it folded up.
Yeah, and I don't even know if final things got to the graphic company.
No, it did. The final things, they were in the process of just listing names and demonstrating they were going to bring down, I think, a list of graph, what was the kind of print that they were going to use and what their ideas were to get this done in the most efficient, effective manner. And maybe it'll open for future.
Local companies still out there, so, graph companies.
Yeah, we still have graphic companies.
Graphic companies out there, so.
Okay.
And maybe we can get the school, high school onboard, too.
Well, that'd be great. Anybody onboard that would help us.
You know, because they've got a pretty good graphics program out there at that trade school now.
Well, I never thought a great deal about it, actually. It's something I thought, well, I can live without it. But I've been researching my dad's service of World War I in France. Then I found out researching my brother, he had five battle stars, bronze stars to his name he never told me about. I never found out about until he was deceased and I received his DD-214. There was five combat battles, so he's like, they are the greatest generation, and folks like him did come back and beat their chest on what I did. They went, come back, they went to work, and they made it kind of what it is.
Great.
So that's all I ask. There's some of us out there that would just like to have our name there for our descendants, and that's all. No stars, no heroics, just our name.
We'll let Dale check with Frank, and then we'll go from there.
You want me to do that now?
You can, or I can.
Well, if you see Frank, I'd appreciate it if you see Frank, if you do, and if I don't see him before you do, and if I see him before you do, I'll mention it, and he'll tell me, well, I haven't seen Dale. But if I mention it, he says I've seen Dale, then I'll just.
Well, Gene, I'm not sure if I have your phone number, Gene, but if you'll leave me your phone number, I'll try to get started on this today.
Well, I'll do that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else out there? All right. We'll move on to approval of claims and payroll.
I'll move to approve the payroll and claims.
Second motion.
Second motion made and seconded that we approve the claims and payroll as presented to us. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. And as usual, I'll pass things down to someone. While we're signing, we did come to make the numbers work for the community crossings grant. It'll be the 400 South project, the 650 West project, and the Springersville Road project from city limits to 450 East.
That's the plan.
That's what's going to be submitted for the application, so. We did, we, our engineering firm was able to work the numbers around so that we're within a few thousand dollars of making that work.
So Michael Mang feels like that we can make it to 450 East on Springersville.
Yeah.
Good.
So that application will go in yet this week. It's due Friday, so hopefully we'll be able to hear.
I also tried to get it in today. I gave her access to my ITAP account, and I think they were going to submit it today.
I thought they were going to try to do it today because they needed this letter, this signature, so.
They were working on it.
So I think the city's got sent last Friday or Monday. Either Friday or this Monday, one of the two. City's got it sent in, and ours is right behind it, so.
Is that everything, someone?
Everything. I don't think you have anything else, do you? Jane, do you have anything else to need signed, signed right here?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.